Good evening, everyone. And welcome to this meeting, this regular meeting of the Kingman City Council at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Councilmember Mello is excused this evening. Councilmember Nelson is excused this evening. Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Griff Vautier of Kingman Presbyterian Church. We would, I'd ask you to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sovereign Lord God, Creator and Sustainer of all peoples, nations, and governments, hear our prayer this evening. We recognize that those who serve our city of Kingman face great challenges at this time, wrestling with decisions on numerous issues that are never easy to determine which path to take. Grant, O Lord, wisdom and discernment to all those who hold public office and who have been invested with the public trust on the municipal level. May every member of the council be member of the heritage of those that have gone before them, and grant each of them the ability to deal with the challenges of today in order to affect a better tomorrow for the citizens of Kingman. Help us to remember that we are always accountable to you, Most Holy God, for all of our decisions and actions, public and personal. Please grant your blessing and your guidance to those involved in tonight's proceedings, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, the first order of business is called to the public. This is a hybrid meeting, so we had various ways for people to participate. Clerk Annie, did we have anyone sign up to participate by email or by telephone?
Mayor, we did not receive any registrants to join us via the Zoom or any written comments received. We do have one person in chambers that would like to address counsel.
Thank you. Thank you for filling that format in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments are limited to three minutes. This evening, Mr. Mitch Thoffson would like to speak at public comment.
Thank you. My name is Mitch Thoffson. I live at 3916 Raymond Avenue. I've come to this council meeting because of the commercial truck traffic on Hillcrest Avenue by the Planet Fitness Gym. My concerns are safety for my 11-year-old granddaughter and other children in the neighborhood. My second concern is when the commercial semi-trailers are parked double along Hillcrest Street, simply meaning one semi on the north side of the street and another semi trailer parked on the south side of Hillcrest, the Hillcrest is not a four-lane highway. When someone meets a car coming from Western and somebody else coming off of Stockton Hill, now we have a serious potential accident area. My third concern is when these commercial semis leave Planet Fitness Gym, they go up Hillcrest into a residential area and try to turn around to get back to Stockton Hill Road, where they can get back to the freeway. They turn on my street, Raymond, and then they try to back up across Hillcrest. Then they try to get back to Stockton Hill Road. I have pictures that show the council of this crazy event. They block traffic for up five to 10 minutes. It doesn't take, it takes quite a while for a semi to turn around on coming traffic from Western. I lived in this residence for about 28 years. I've never seen the commercial trucks and semis driving into the residential streets such as Hillcrest, Raymond, Lindsay, Western, et cetera. I'm not alone on these concerns. When my neighbors can't believe this allowed, I'm not alone on these concerns. My neighbors can't believe this is allowed to happen either. Because when the commercial trucks or semis can't park by the Planet Fitness Gym, they start parking further up on Hillcrest toward Western. This area of Hillcrest is totally all residential property. I have pictures to show my concerns about this. I think some of the council members have some of that on hand. My last concern is Hillcrest Street cannot handle the gross weight of all these semis traveling on it. I have a picture to show that Hillcrest Street is all cracked up, and from commercial trucks, I need repair done on it as we speak. Some possible solutions could be no commercial trucks or semis unless they are delivering products to that medical clinic across from Planet Fitness. Allow parking on one side of Hillcrest for the commercial trucks. No commercial truck parking after 10:00. No U-turns on Raymond, Lindsay, and also Western. No idling trucks running refrigeration units on commercial after 10:00 PM at Hillcrest Street. Planet Fitness usually shuts down at 10:00 at night. There is parking across the street on the other side of Stockton Hill in a six-acre parking lot that's commercial over there. That is where most of the semis park anyway when they go to Planet Fitness Gym. I hope the city council will make some necessary changes to stop these safety concerns. Noise issues of Planet Fitness Gym at night. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the written comments and pictures. Okay. The next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussions desire that item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Would the council members like to remove any of the consent agenda items for discussion? No? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, items A through G.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. This evening, we have no old business, so we will move into new business. The Venture Club of Kingman is requesting to donate a 20-by-20 picnic area shade structure at Cecil Davis Park along Van Buren Street near the splash pad. Cost of this project will be $20,000 to the Venture Club. The shade structure will be constructed by ShadeNet out of Phoenix and paid for by the Venture Club, and staff recommends approval. Good evening, Mr. Mearsman.
Good evening. I don't really have a lot. I had in the packet pictures of what it's going to be. Basically, it's going to be like the shade structures that are over our playground. When I was approached by the Venture Club to do something, they wanted to do something nice at Cecil Davis Park near Splash Pad. I thought, doesn't get much better than this. We need more seating in the shade, and this will be a revenue generator for us as well because when people reserve the space, we make money on it. So we think it's a great thing, and if anybody else wants to donate more of them, we have more space there for more of them.
(laughing).
But anyway, we think it's a great fit for there, and so obviously, we recommend approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone here from the Ventures Club that would like to speak?
They're not. I mentioned to them that this would be here, and they just couldn't make it. So, but I truly appreciate them and all they've done at that park, so.
Well, we have the Splash Pad because of the Venture Club, and so this is a really, really nice gesture to take it even a step further. So, well, given that, are there any questions of Mr. Mearsman? Okay, then, could I have a motion to accept the donation request from the Venture Club for a picnic area shade structure?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilperson Samley, and thank you, Councilor Walker. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And we just really want to express our appreciation again to the Venture Club for all they're doing in partnership with the city. Second order of business is a letter of support designating Route 66 as a national historic trail. The city of Kingman would like to have Route 66 designated as a national historic trail. In an effort to do so, we are requesting support from our federal delegation. Staff recommends authorizing the mayor to sign the letters of support on behalf of the city council. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this one's pretty easy. One of our treasures in our community and the reason why we have thousands of visitors every year is Route 66. And there has been an effort over the last, I would say, five to 10 years to designate Route 66 as a historic trail. It would actually be the first road, motor car road, that received that designation. So it, we feel like that it will improve visits or increase the visits more, give us the opportunity to improve it with federal funding that goes along with the designation and does not handcuff us from doing what we want. I know that's been a question in the past, and just wanted to point out that it does give us advantages, but we don't see really too many disadvantages. We're hoping that through this effort, again, there was a big push two years ago, two and a half years ago. It didn't go away, but it certainly didn't progress. So we're hoping that this time, there's enough people that signed the petition. There's a national petition that anybody can go on and support. We would actually encourage our citizens to do that. We really do, our economy is really tied to Route 66 and the visits that we get because of Route 66. And so that tourism industry, as we're trying to rebuild it, this would be a big part of that. So just looking for the council to agree to have a signed letter go to our federal delegation for support.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Comments or any questions regarding this? I would just like to mention that it goes so well with our new efforts downtown with the arch, the drive-through shield, which I understand is virtually always getting pictures made with people driving through the drive-through shield. And it's very, very well-received in the community. So we want a lot of people coming from Route 66 to stop in Kingman and take advantage of all we're offering. So if there are any, is there a motion to submit this letter of support to designate Route 66?
I'll make a motion to have the mayor sign the letter of support.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to, this is a very short meeting tonight.[851.01][851.01](laughing) Lovely. But now we have some department reports that we want to hear, and the first one is on water conservation. Manager Foggan?
Yes. I believe this is something that we've been planning on reporting on for some time as we've been working through a conservation report. This report actually ends up being pretty important because in completing it, it actually opens the door for some federal funding, once we have the necessary pieces in place. So I believe that Vice Mayor Watkins had suggested this be a department report, which was really easy since we were already planning on it. So thank you for that, Vice Mayor. And so ask Rob to introduce kind of what they've been working on and to take you through our conservation report with our consultant. So, Rob, it's all yours.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Foggan, Mayor, and council members. So as the manager stated, we've been going through the process of updating our water conservation plan. We are ready tonight to present at least some of the information on the process we've gone through to do that and some of the preliminary findings. The plan has not been finalized yet. So tonight, we have with us Doug Koberic. He's our consultant. He's with Hazen and Sawyer Consultants, and Doug's going to walk us through this presentation. If anyone has any questions along the way, please feel free to interject. So with that, I will turn it over to Doug.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate the introduction. Hopefully, the sound is okay from my end. Apologize for the virtual presentation. Hopefully, not going to make any faux pas here with Zoom presentation. I guess Ms. Meredith, you'll advance the slides for me then as I go through, I guess?
Doug, we can help.
Or Rob will? Okay.
Yes, I'll do that, Doug.
Okay, thanks. I can't see who's doing one of their, okay, so if you want to go to the next slide, Rob.
Doug, we can hear you just fine, so your volume.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate, I appreciate that. So I'll try not to turn this brief meeting into a long meeting, but I do have some slides to present here to update on how the conservation planning is working out. You don't need me to explain to you the significance of the water situation in Kingman. Hazen and Sawyer has been fortunate to have been retained by the city for several assignments that relate to this issue, and so we appreciate that very much. We value the opportunity to work with the city. And through that work, you know, it's quite clear the city has taken a number of actions to strengthen your water supply. Your staff had a distribution system water audit performed. The system was only reported to be losing 3%, which is really good performance, much better than mid-comparable utilities. You had a study done on the potential for direct reuse of reclaimed water, which unfortunately didn't find a lot of potential for that. There's the recharge work at the wastewater treatment plant that's progressing. I know there are projects in the region to promote recharge of stormwater runoff, looking at a potential new water supply from Sacramento Valley, cooperating with USGS on the hydrogeologic study, engaging with ADWR in their efforts to reach out to the community up there, and then also developing this water conservation plan. So, Rob, if you want to go to the next one, please. So, yeah, what is water conservation? Well, it's a beneficial reduction in lost waste or use, and it basically means focusing in this context on working on the demand side of the equation with your customers to try to help them become more efficient in the way that they use the water that you provide to them. There's also an aspect for the city, and it's options that come into play. If you conserve a significant amount of water, you can view it basically as a new supply for the city, a supply that you control. And in general, a water conservation plan is the least expensive supply approach that's available to most utilities. And there's lots of good reasons to develop that program. They're listed there. I won't read them all off to you, but, you know, when you're looking at the potential need for new supply in the face of threats to your supply, that's certainly a motivation. There are energy savings, cost savings to your customers. Basically, in the end, it's your customers who reap the benefits from reducing the cost of the overall water supply in Kingman, and so it's just a good thing to do for your customers. Next slide, please. So the American Water Works Association is the professional organization that basically serves the municipal drinking water industry, and they have a whole series of manuals on best practices, including one on water conservation programs. It's their manual 52, and this is the outline of the procedures that they recommend for developing a conservation program. And that outline basically formed the foundation for the scope of work that we've been working on with your staff in developing this program. I won't read them all off to you, but it's pretty straightforward, pretty common sense. Next slide, please. Another thing that that document presents is their recommended water conservation policy for utilities. You know, none of this is binding, of course, but it is good guidance, and that includes things like having codes or policies requiring or sustaining efficient water use, making sure water conservation is part of your supply planning as you're doing here, metering consumption, which, believe it or not, some utilities still don't do in this country, implementing conservation, providing education and information. These are some of the things that go to a conservation plan. Supporting the development and implementation of efficiency standards. A lot has been gained from some of the water-efficient plumbing standards that were enacted 20 years ago. Looking at onsite reuse, which you've already done, and then making sure that your own house is in order, so to speak, and that you're being efficient in your own operations of your public facilities. Next slide, please, Rob. And one of the good things here is that, you know, the water utility industry has been working on conservation for quite a while. With all the stuff that's in the news right now, there's even heightened attention now, but there are lots of resources out there you can draw upon and that we can draw upon in developing this program. So there's lots of things you can tap into to help you advance your own program. So just a quick overview of some of the facts and figures regarding your water production and the demands you serve. We did a review of your water billing history. The city serves about 7 million gallons a day of water to its customers. It breaks down into a number of different categories you guys have identified, actually mainly for wastewater billing, but they're helpful to look at with respect to water consumption analysis also. And if you look at the large blue slice of that pie, you can see that the overwhelming, largest use in Kingman is residential, and then there is an industrial segment, and then there is apartments, which isn't included with the single-family residential, and then it breaks down into a number of smaller categories. So a lot of the use is in just households. Factor that sometimes gets looked at, it's not a precise yardstick because every community's situation differs, but it's gallons per capita per day, the amount of water produced by the utility divided by the number of people that are being served in Kingman. That value is about 176 gallons per person per day in the overall, including all the categories. And when you look at residential, it's about 89 gallons per capita per day, little, just a little bit, right around half, just as the other chart showed. And just if you're curious how that stacks up against some other communities in the state, Phoenix is higher, Tucson is a little lower. The overall statewide residential per capita is quite a bit higher than Kingman's, and Mojave County residential per capita, according to the source that we had found, is basically double what Kingman, the Kingman Water Systems customers are using. So, you know, basically, you're already doing pretty well. Your customers are doing pretty well, but that doesn't mean there's not room for some more savings. Next slide. I just included this slide because it might be of interest, sort of overall interest, to set sort of the big picture of what's going on with water in Arizona. I'm sure we all read the newspaper and see the alarming headlines. If you look at the, this is the history of water consumption going back to 1955. This is some data that we got from the Department of Water Resources, and you can see, basically, Arizona was using less water in 2014 than it was in 1955, even though the population of the state had increased greatly, and that was mostly due to a decline in the amount of water being used by agriculture. And you can see that it peaked around 1980, which is when the Groundwater Management Act was passed, and although it doesn't directly affect Kingman very much, it definitely had an impact statewide. And so then also, what's kind of interesting here is that even though the state continued to grow in population after the turn of this century, the municipal consumption served by cities like Kingman has stayed flat, even though the population of the state has gone up a great deal since that time. So what that shows is that there's quite a bit of water conservation already happening and that we can keep our total consumption level, even though the state has been growing quite rapidly. Next slide, please. This chart shows the results, a small part of the results of a study that was done by the Water Research Foundation, which is basically the research arm of that American Water Works Association I mentioned to you, and also the Water Environment Federation, which is basically the wastewater association, similar to AWWA for Water. They share a research foundation. And they have commissioned a couple of end-use studies over the past couple of decades, trying to get an understanding of how water is actually being used inside single-family residential housing. And it might be kind of hard to believe, but it really had never been quantified before the first study that was done, at least not in a defensible way, before the first study that was done back in 1999, and then there was an update in 2016. And actually, one of the authors of this study is Jack Kiefer, who works also at Hazen and Sawyer, is a colleague of mine at Hazen, is a national expert on this stuff. But it's very interesting to see where the action is with respect to water use, and probably not too surprisingly, the biggest use are toilets, followed closely by faucets, showers, and then clothes washers. And then you can also see leaks are a significant part of the amount of water that a typical house uses, and this is a sort of a nationwide average, just for a little perspective. And then in the 2016 update that they did on this study, they compared the uses or the water consumed per use between all these different categories of uses in a house, and I won't belabor how they figured this stuff out, but the items that are circled in orange are items that changed in a fairly, you know, significant way over that 17-year period, roughly from 1999 to 2016. And you can see that, for example, the amount of water being used by toilets went down from 18.5 gallons per capita per day to 14.3. That's a significant drop. And you can also see the clothes washers also had a really big drop, and both of those are due to the advent of more water-efficient versions of those appliances. You know, the front-loading washing machines that have become very popular, also known as the horizontal access washers, are much more water-efficient than the top loaders that, you know, people like me who grew up in the 60s and 70s are familiar with. And also, the efficiency standards for toilets have really had a measurable, statistically valid impact and actually saved quite a bit of water, and that's a big part of why we've been able to add population without having to, without water consumption really increasing in the municipal sector. You can see the overall result is a drop from 69 to 58.5 on a national basis for per capita use in residential. Next slide. So I put that out there just because that's going to come up a little later here in the things that we target for what we think the plan should most look at. So our goal was to design a program that was going to gain benefits that are relevant to Kingman. There's lots of things that can be done, but as I said earlier, you know, different cities are different. They have different customer bases. Those customers have, you know, different priorities or needs. So in the case of Kingman, you're under threat, basically, due to the advent of all this large-scale agriculture that has moved into the region. We were out at the wastewater plant just the other day, and there's another orchard that's cropped up right next door. So there's obviously pressure on the water supply. In a separate project, we've looked at the potential to someday develop a new supply in Sacramento. to someday develop a new supply in Sacramento Valley, if that need arose and the ability to defer that major capital program would certainly be a motivator to justify a water conservation effort first, like I said, usually the cheapest source of supply, so to speak. Also, there are savings in your current operations, you know, the less you pump your wells, the less energy you consume. You know, there are greenhouse gas benefits as well, if that's a priority for the city, but the bottom line is that you have a a cost-of-service-based rate structure, which means that eventually your customers pay the cost of operating the utility, which is standard good practice for for any water utility, so. When you try to figure out who's getting the benefit, like, okay, well, the city might sell less water, but at the end of the day, your customers, your citizens ultimately come out ahead if the city and they can use less water and less energy to do their daily activities. And then finally, there's also just the public perception item, you know, is the right thing to do? I think everybody fully accepts that now, I think. You know, given this current situation and all the news, I think people understand that this just has to be, there's just no room for for waste. And and most of your peer utilities are also doing similar things, such as Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, Flagstaff, et cetera, they've all developed conservation programs that are sort of parallel to what what's being looked at here. Next slide, please. So this is just sort of an overall map of how you might want to think about a conservation program being organized. And I would suggest you might want to think about a program that's the part that's with your customers, and then there's the part that you can control directly in your in-house operations. And when you look at your customers and you try to sort of mentally organize how this program would be structured, it it kind of breaks down into four categories. There's making people aware and educating them. There's technical assistance to very directly go to them and say, here are the things that that you can do, that this is often something you might do with an industrial customer. You could give them financial incentives to save, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And you can also impose requirements. And as you can probably guess, usually the requirements are the least popular, but in many cases, they're the most effective. For example, the requirement that toilets be made more water-efficient, which took effect back in the mid nineties, wasn't probably enthusiastically wel- welcomed by a lot of folks, but it has actually saved a tremendous amount of water. And then in the city operations, obviously, you want to control the water that you lose in operating your water system, which based on your water audit results, you're doing, your your staff is doing an outstanding job on that. Meter accuracy also shows up in your water loss percentage. And then you want to be water efficient in the city's own operations, which could be everything from, you know, city hall to the golf course, to public works operations and so on. You want to at least, you know, set a good example for your customers that the city is not asking to do anything that the city isn't doing itself, so. That's just a way to look at it. As I mentioned, you your team had a water distribution system audit done, and the result basically was only a three percent loss. The Department of Water Resources in Arizona, basically in the areas where they regulate utilities, which again is not really Kingman, but that standard is ten percent or less, so you guys are well, well within what will be considered good practice, good results in the operation of your system. There's always room to look at meter accuracy, just to see if you can shave anything else off of that and make sure you're getting paid for the water you deliver to your customers and you know how much you're making, and again, it seems like it's going well, but that's another topic. And then, like I said, the the public facilities, the golf course is the largest use in Kingman by a wide margin. So that's obviously going to be something that could be looked at. Talk about it a little bit more in a second. Water audits, retrofits of plumbing, changing out inefficient plumbing with new plumbing. You can have demonstration gardens, pilot new technologies and publicize things to the citizens. There's a lot of things that the city could do in its program. And quite honestly, we're not saying you should do everything, including the kitchen sink. We think there are certain things you should target that would give you the best return for your efforts, at least initially. Next slide, please. So public education programs. These don't, you may not conserve an obvious direct directly measurable amount of water, but you basically have to have the messaging to support the program, to explain why conservation is necessary, why it benefits the customer. I think your citizens are probably more aware of the risks to the city's water system than most, just based on the the situation there in Kingman. But then you want to make sure they realize that they have a role they can play, there's actions they can take to achieve water conservation, and there are many resources that you can tap into from other utilities programs that could help you educate your your customer population. The the benefit of this, of course, is that you get a quick result when people get the message and they decide to do something. The only downside is that sometimes when people change their behavior over time, they tend to backslide and maybe, you know, get tired of it, so education alone might not be enough. Next slide, please. So here's just some examples, you can probably imagine what these are, you can you can advertise, you can send information to your customers with the bills, you can create a website, and again, there's a lot you can do to copy or let's say borrow from some of your colleagues in other cities of Havasu, Flagstaff, Tucson. Pretty much every city in Arizona has a water conservation program, and the folks who work in those programs are more than willing to to help others, they they do a lot of information sharing amongst themselves, and there's no reason why Kingman couldn't tap into that network. Next. So then, school education programs, this is aimed at the kids, there's a program called Water Education for Teachers, Project Wet, that has a whole curriculum that can be delivered to schoolchildren on the subject of water conservation, working in other elements of, you know, science and so on in that in that learning. One of the most powerful elements of school education is, of course, when the kids learn how to conserve water. You know, they tend to incorporate it into their lives, the rest of their lives. And they also, there's a definite element there where they take that knowledge home and remind their parents to be water efficient, and you know, kids probably don't mind busting mom or dad if they catch them wasting water, and that can be another powerful motivator. I don't want my teenager telling me that I'm I'm wasting water, so. Anyway, that's that's a pretty powerful mechanism to get the word out. Obviously, there has to be a lot of coordination done to to launch a curriculum like that, but those resources are definitely there. Next slide, please, Rob. When we come to the industrial, commercial, and institutional sector, I personally have got a lot of experience in this in this in this category. One of the things about these customers is in general, they're larger than your other customers, they use more water. But they also can be more site-specific. Each business has its own water uses, and obviously they don't want to do anything to save water that's going to impair their ability to deliver their service or their product, but that doesn't mean that everything they're doing is one hundred percent efficient, and there's often room for improvement, and the the positive side of that is that because, you know, they have a profit motive or they have a budget they need to meet, they can be motivated to take action on things that clearly make sense, that can be defined. And and that's another element that you can develop into your program, is making sure that you you don't overlook this segment. There's just some points in there about how you would have to go about approaching these companies. And then the only other point I want to make out, I want to bring forward is the possibility of working with trade groups, the restaurants, the hotels, you know, if you you've probably seen, you know, the 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 green information that most hotel rooms have nowadays, you know, do you really need your your sheets laundered every day? Please save water, please use less soap, et cetera. So that's definitely been embraced by those industries, and there's opportunities for you to collaborate with them as well. Next slide, please. Golf course and other turf facilities, as I mentioned, the golf course is the largest water-using facility in Kingman. As I, as I mentioned at the beginning, your customer classifications in your billing history were really, as I understand it, developed to help do wastewater rate setting. So the golf course and your parks are classified as in the government slash public buildings sector, which, you know, is pretty different than city hall or some other municipal office building. We compiled the information on the golf course, and basically, it's the biggest user, it's not using that much more water than a lot of other golf courses in Arizona. But because it is the largest customer, it probably could, you know, take, you know, some some attention just to see if there are some opportunities there. Rob and I have had a discussion about that, we know that the golf course already does things to conserve water. Just because they're the biggest, that certainly doesn't mean like they were pointing them out as the least efficient, but they are a large customer, so we would want to at least think about opportunities there. And it would have to be a cooperative effort all the way around. Next slide, please. Then office buildings and public facilities. There aren't that many office buildings in Kingman, you know, I mentioned the public facilities. So that also includes your parks in that government buildings category, and then also the schools, which are in a schools category. And so there are probably opportunities for outdoor water efficiency that are some of the more, or at least the outdoor water use is probably the biggest thing, other than just the straightforward plumbing aspects. So we did do an attempt to evaluate the amount of water being used on a per-acre basis and compare that to guidance for water efficiency. Just by looking at aerial photos of the schools and the parks, you can see that they are not being over-irrigated, shall we say, they're probably deficit irrigated, which means that they're not getting the theoretical full water requirement for that turf grass crop. They're getting enough water to keep the turf grass alive and, you know, reasonably healthy and have what what the agronomy folks might call adequate quality turf as opposed to high-quality turf. And so, again, that's a significant water use. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's a significantly wasteful water use, but because of the size of that group, we do want to, you know, take a look at that and make sure that we don't overlook it in in developing the program. Next slide, please. We come to the schools, I already mentioned the outdoor water use. There are other uses in a school building, obviously. Again, a lot of it comes down to the plumbing, which we're going to talk about just a little bit more here in a minute. There might be some other specialized facilities at schools, especially a high school. But it's mostly the the plumbing and then the outdoor uses. Next one slide, please, Rob. Okay, so then I mentioned regulations and ordinances earlier. The Energy Policy Act of nineteen ninety-two created national requirements for water-efficient plumbing fixtures. And like I said, I'm not sure that people were thrilled with that at the time, but it has been very successful. And if you go to Home Depot to buy a toilet, all you can buy is an ultra-low flush toilet, or even the next generation, which is the high-efficiency toilet, which is even a little lower water consumption than the ultra-low flush toilet, so. Just just for comparison, a toilet from the seventies or earlier might have used five gallons of flush, and that's now down to basically one and a quarter gallons of flush, so they use three-quarters less water than the toilets of the past. So it has been very successful. One thing that we have seen elsewhere is that sometimes the plumbing codes strive for conservatism, so they might have oversized piping that doesn't drain as well as it should in the lower-flow environment, so there are things we can do to take a look at that, if that's applicable in Kingman. Other ordinances or requirements you guys could have would be like prohibiting water in the streets, people not being allowed to let water run off their property. A lot of places go to odd-even watering days. Not quite convinced that they're all that effective. If you were in Phoenix, the Phoenix AMA regulated by DWR, that you know, there's a prohibition in the AMAs on any fake lakes or decorative water features in the public right-of-way. But that doesn't apply in Kingman, but these are just examples. Like I said, specifically mandating certain best practices is a tough sell and difficult to enforce, and that's true. So you want to be selective in what you would take on if you wanted to mandate certain things. And then also enforcement is a question because DWR and the AMAs, the areas of the state that are subject to all their water conservation requirements, had a series of things for industrial users, which were businesses and industries that were self-supplied with groundwater, and then municipalities were supposed to impose those same rules on their customers in the same categories. And it basically never happened. There were supposed to be standards for cooling towers and and other uses like that in industry, and they basically never got enforced, so. If you're going to undertake some sort of regulatory effort, you want to think about whether you know, it's enforceable, whether it's realistically enforceable. Next slide, please. Okay, then we come to financial incentives, again, these are probably one of the more effective approaches. Certainly, combining the the low-flow plumbing fixtures with a financial incentive gets a lot of water conservation to happen. But before you get to that, you know, you have a rate structure to promote conservation, inclining blocks, where the more you consume, the higher the water rate goes for the for the upper levels of consumption. Some communities have gone to seasonal rates so that the water used in the summer, when it's more expensive to produce, because you have to use more of your more expensive sources, they approach it that way. Some cities have set goals for their customers in terms of how much water they should target to be using. But then, if we move on to true financial incentives, that's basically cash to the water customer for conservation actions, and it can take the form of a rebate or a voucher, or perhaps performance-based incentives, which are linked to the actual amount of water being saved. That's more typically done in the commercial industrial sector, where a site would have a water audit done, document how much water is being used, and then commit to a program to do certain things to save water, and the utility might contribute to that. That's been very successful in places like Los Angeles and all throughout Southern California, really, hasn't really taken hold here in Arizona, but many utilities have done plumbing rebates, and some extended to other fixtures such as the horizontal access washers. Because it's quite clear they do, they do save water, and that is a benefit to the utility and the community. Which brings up the the gift clause of the of the state constitution, which Rob tells me you guys already know prohibits a gift of a public asset to a private entity, in short. So to launch an incentives program or a rebate program, you would need to demonstrate that the benefit that the city is gaining outweighs or at least balances the amount of the incentive being paid. And several other utilities are already doing these rebate programs, so it's certainly possible to to make that demonstration, you just need to set that value at the right, at the right amount. Next slide, please. There's just a little more information, some examples of things. I personally think that for Kingman, targeting toilets, and then also a high-efficiency clothes washers, those are the two items that clearly save water when they're implemented in in single-family residential. And then maybe have some sort of an industrial program, your industrial segment is is not huge, but it is, it is substantial, it's one of your largest categories. It's one of your largest categories. Those would be some things to think about. Next slide, please. We're almost done. Next slide again. So, just looking at what Kingman could do. The Department of Water Resources here in Arizona has a whole list of rec, of, of best practices for water conservation. And in the course of this work with your, with your staff, we've gone through that list and made a preliminary identification of which of those we think makes sense to be applied in Kingman. And, and not every, like I said earlier, you don't want the, the entire, everything plus the kitchen sink. You want things that make sense and, and that fit. The background here is, of course, that your customers are already pretty efficient. Even without any formal program, they're, they're already not using an excessive amount of water, at least as a group. I'm sure you have outlier individual customers, but that per capita of eighty-nine gallons per person per day compares really well with most other cities in Arizona. You know, there's not a lot of turf in Kingman. There, there's not as many pools as you might see some places. You have one golf course. And, you know, from what we can see so far, it's not using an exorbitant amount of water either, even though it's the biggest user. The parks and schools use quite a bit of water, but again, that they appear to be deficit irrigating. Your ICI sector is mostly relatively small customers, even though they add up to a fair amount as a group. So, it's not like there's some glaring sore thumb here that, you know, needs to be fixed right now. It's more a matter of a cumulative effect that overall will help you defer the, a new water supply program. Hopefully, the public will appreciate the fact that the city is doing all that it can to make the water supply stretch as far as it can. There are standards for water conservation programs that you could meet and just demonstrate that you're running your utility in a very efficient and responsible fashion. And I already mentioned the DWR practices. We would focus on choosing those off that list that makes sense for Kingman. And I think this next one is the last slide, thank goodness. But here's just some things that we think are worthy of, of looking at for Kingman. Keep doing those distribution system audits to make sure everything remains at, at a very high level of performance, the way it has been, which is fantastic. Have an in-city program, maybe do a demonstration garden. Take a look at the golf course, but we would need to talk further with them to make sure, you know, that we are understanding the situation. Again, as I said, I don't want to dwell on that customer because there's nothing that's like way out of bounds there at all. You could create an advisory committee of your customers. Set a goal that's realistic, but then hopefully you can, you know, mark your progress against and achieve. Make sure you publicize what you do. Go to an education program, Project Wet or something similar. Educate your customers and the key on the whole education thing is to, uh, let's just say borrow from some of the other existing programs out there. There's a ton of material that you can tap into. And then technical assistance for your customers. Might look at some limited water audits. I don't think that's going to be a huge part of your program. I do think coordinating with the trade groups that represent like the restaurants and the hotels would be a, a worthwhile thing to do. Make sure your plumbing code mandates high efficiency. I think a water waste ordinance, if you don't have one, would be a good thing to do. And then finally, in the financial incentives category, keep with the conservation-oriented rates. And probably the biggest, most tangible thing would be to really take a hard look at implementing a rebate program for some clearly water-saving devices like the toilets and the, the horizontal access washing machines. And I think that is it. I appreciate your patience with me. I did turn your short meeting into a long meeting, so I apologize for that. But thank you for, for hearing me out.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any questions for Doug? I'm sorry, this is a department report. It's, I was asking the council. I don't think I can take questions from, we can't take questions from the public. No, I heard your question. The council can't take questions for, from the public during these reports. Our attorney just verified that. Sorry. But does the council have any questions? Okay. Well, I have a couple. First of all, I want to thank you for validating what I think many of us already believed, which is most people that live in Kingman know we live in a desert and have been very, have been very conscientious about water usage. I think a number of things that have been mentioned have been elements that might, you know, tweak it and make it better. But my question to, I guess, Manager Foggan is, what is the game plan here? Are we planning to have a what city conservation program? Is that something that will be brought to council to consider?
So, this, this report, when it is finalized, will come to the council for approval. So, this will be our guiding document as we move forward. As Doug indicated, we will also be evaluating our ordinances to make sure that they match or line up with that document. It would be silly to have ordinances out of whack with plans. So, there's, there's a few additional steps that absolutely have to, to go into this process. The, we reported not too long ago on the water loss audit, which was really important, something that we, we're committed to, to having as we move forward. As you know, we, we do have an internal commission that, that worries and stewes and works on these. So, we've already got that in place as well. But this, this report, when it's finalized, will come and be adopted and be part of how we move forward with our conservation plans.
Thank you. And when you say the commission, are, is our water sustainability committee still meeting and in partnership with the county?
Yep.
Excellent. And will this include in any of the, the elements that are part of the effort, legislative efforts? Or is this just something that we'll deal with, with the infrastructure and protocols and procedures for the city?
So, this is an internal document. Like I said before, though, having this document in place is important for us to be able to apply for federal water grants that are out there, and there are a number of them. We've not been able to qualify for those because we've not had several reports in place, this being a key one. So, it will be, it's really an internal document if the state water folks or the state legislature passed some laws. Obviously, if our, you know, if, if this document doesn't have or isn't tight enough, then we'd have to revisit it. But I, I actually think that this document takes us well far ahead of where we, where we need to be. And as Doug pointed out, I, I've been super impressed with this community and its, its use of water. I mean, it is, we, we should be, as a community, very proud of how we're taking care of our water. And, and, and it's, it's admirable that people are paying attention. And as a community, we are mindful. This document solidifies that and as is indicated in the report, there's always room for improvement. And I think that's what we're looking for. You know, we always talk about best practices. And this is definitely a best practice document. And I think Vice Mayor had brought this up as a subject because he was attending a water meeting and Lake Havasu was talking about their conservation efforts. And so, and they've done a great job in Lake Havasu as well. But, but our community is holding its own. As you can see, we're not that far off of Tucson, which is a true desert community. And being close to what they're at is, again, kudos to our people.
Truly kudos, yes. So, when this, you say this will help us in getting grant funds potentially to have, we have to have this. Do we, is there any possibility of the infrastructure bills that are being discussed include water infrastructure? And would that, would this type of program help us in that regard also?
Yeah, I haven't seen any of the new rules or what they're considering, but I know that, for instance, DEQ and EPA in particular, who have always concentrated on the sewer and kind of pollution side, have basically changed their tune to say that the water side is just as important as the sewer side. And so, in, in applying for loans, applying for grant money from, you know, EPA is an example, the, these kind of documents absolutely are crudi, critical to proving why, you know, that, that we're doing what we need to do with the water and why we should get the grant money to do what we want to do. So, yeah, I think it really helps us in, with both at the state and federal level.
I think that's really important because it's not, it's not just a trivial exercise. It is something that solidifies the city's position as, you know, and recognizes how well our, our citizens are doing in water management. And will help us get funding for the infrastructure that is desperately needed as we move forward. And one other question. Will it address things such as the infrastructure, including the site selection? When you're talking about, he talked about all of the things we're doing, the injection wells, this, looking for sites in the Sacramento and other things. This document, will it address that or it just supports?
It just supports.
Just supports it.
Just supports, yeah. It, it really is the framework needed to make our existing sources last as long as, as possible before you have to invest in more costly source allocation.
Right. And just a comment, I guess. I, I know I've had a lot of feedback of why should the city work so hard when, when agriculture is taking all the water? But it's important for the reasons that you've just said, to help get us funding for the efforts that we're going to make to, to keep that water coming to our citizens.
Yeah, I think, I think that conversations, actually, this, this effort actually lends itself to a better argument for the city when we're telling people outside of our lim, city limits, particularly the farming community that are doing big orchards, is that, you know, please, please cut back. We're doing the best we can with our water and we have been for a number of years and we need you to do the same because you're impacting us. And I think that's, this document sends that message.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to echo what Manager Foggan and, of course, has said. He, I think he hit all the key points and why I wanted to bring this forward and I appreciate Rob and, and this report and, of course, Mr. Cobrick and the information. So, I think this is a big help on accomplishing and bringing, well, bringing it all to the forefront again and there's keeping it up there, that we need to work on water comfort, conservation. So, once again, thanks to all involved.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Mr. Mearsman, I'd add to, I would add thank you to you for doing the parks and the golf course. Just making sure it's not too far underwater. Okay. The next item of business or a department report is semi-truck and trailer parking in residential areas. And this speaks to the issue brought up earlier.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Council, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to this. It's been kind of an ongoing thing for a while. So, I'm hoping tonight to give you a brief understanding of what our code specifically says to this issue. I want to maybe talk about how we apply the code and what our enforcement efforts look like. I'll speak to some specifics of this one, certainly, and then having some potential solutions moving forward. So, I only have one slide, so you'll listen to me. This is just so that we all know kind of what we're, we're talking about. I think we do. But our existing code, it's section seven dash seven, seven point one. I think it's, it's applicable, it's appropriate. I think it's useful for us to apply. It talks about where, while loading and unloading, delivering and making a service call at a residence, no one's going to park a commercial vehicle. It does allow for tow trucks and it specifies the size on a residential street. That also specifies that you can't park within your yard or on the side yard unless you're in a six-foot site-restrictive fence and then you can park a commercial vehicle on your property. It does specify larger vehicles, five tons or more, which covers tractor-trailers. And it does prohibit those parking in a residential area anywhere unless they're loading, unloading, delivering merchandise and things like that. So, it's very clear, it's very specific when we're talking about a residential area. So, I do believe our code, as it sits, is effective. It works for us. Generally, generally, our enforcement efforts are complaint-driven. Unless it's a safety issue. For the most part, we've always had compliance. This area is unique and I'll speak to that. But generally, it's complaint-driven. So, if we receive a complaint, which are fairly infrequent, but it does happen in different residential all over town, it's usually solved by voluntary verbal warning or a written warning, and we have done that in the past as well. So, this specific concern, which is on the screen, is involving Hillcrest Drive between Stockton Hill. I'm saying Raymond. Raymond is the first street on the left there, but I do know it overflows to Western and other parts of that neighborhood. And it's about specifically vehicles parking on each side, commercial vehicles parking on each side of that street. And we do assume that it's folks going to Planet Fitness, using the gym, using the showering facilities and things like that. So, and it is a problem. I would agree. I appreciate Mr. Thoffson's pictures. If I was living in that neighborhood, I would be upset as well. So, this specific topic was brought up to the Traffic Safety Committee. I think it's important to note, if you don't know, that just so everybody knows, the Traffic Safety Committee is comprised of leadership and folks that have decision-making abilities in Public Works, Engineering Department, Street Department, Fire Department and the Police Department. They get together regularly. I want to say it's monthly. And they're responsible for lots of things and some of that includes making sure if it's an issue, if it justifies a traffic study, traffic counts. New signage, replacing signage, you know, the coordination of signals, if a signal is justified, it's install or reapply. And one of the guiding, excuse me, one of the guiding authorities of that group is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And you'll sometimes hear that referred to as the MUTCD. And that manual, it's issued by the Federal Highway Administration and it specifies standards and specifics for establishing street lights, road surface markings, lane widths, signs and things like that. And it also defines those standards specifically and it gives our Public Works Director and our, our Street Department Director, which you all know, Jack Plonning, he's very, very knowledgeable in this area. And it gives them the directions and definitions of maintaining and installing traffic lights on public streets, highways, bikeways, pedestrian paths, or any street that is open to the public for, for travel with motor vehicles. So, but specifically in this area on Hillcrest, it's important to understand that everything to the right of that line, that red line, is commercial. Everything to the left is residential. And there's no Planet Fitness in this picture, but obviously there is now. So, as a result of the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, and this is also an ongoing agenda on the, on the committee. We have some suggestions and things we're looking into. But it is commercial. The roadway is forty-two feet wide. The average tractor-trailer width is eight and a half feet. I know these are just boring statistics, but it's important to the establishment of what's happening so far. And with the weight, road being forty-two feet wide, it allows for about a twelve-and-a-half-foot traffic lane if a truck is parked on each side. And that meets minimum, I don't know what the minimum is, but that's plenty of room for the documents, right, for the matrices to allow safe traffic. I have personally seen it and I know visually it's intimidating. And I would share Mr. Thoffson's concerns as well. But based on that, that's just something that's just be important. So, recently, we have received multiple complaints, not just from this area, but other areas of town in regards to large commercial trucks using residential streets to get to a business or go to a, a commercial area and they're using it. And we currently don't have any rules or laws or codes that allow us to restrict a legally-registered vehicle to operate on a roadway in the city. But if they are using private property, we can take enforcement action. If they're parking in a residential area, we can take enforcement action if, if we're told about it. So, that's something that we can do. There are some locations in town that are, that have signage that directs trucks to use an alternate route. The one I'm thinking of right now is The one I'm thinking of right now is in front of Del Taco when trucks are turning into the Walmart drive there at the end of Sycamore, there's a sign, often ignored, and you know as well as I do, that's a, that's a terrible area, but it's not enforceable, right? So those signs are just suggestions because those trucks, they don't want to get stuck either, but a lot of them aren't familiar with the area. But those signs are not legally binding. But as a city, we can restrict parking. The Traffic Safety Committee has concerns with restricting parking in the commercial area because it does restrict access to commercial businesses. And if we did in one area, it's something that we would want to be considered of and you should probably do it in all of those areas. But at this point, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Traffic Safety Committee as a group, that the residential area could be clearly defined with, with proper signage. It would help us with enforcement of a residential area because a lot of these truck drivers, right, they don't know. They just go in there, they get stuck and they do what Mr. Thawson described. And I do think that that can be done and that will help us again with the enforcement piece in the residential areas. We could do that now, we can get them out of there, but it'd be nice to have it clearly marked so that we could follow through with, with enforcement. So it is an ongoing item on the Traffic Safety Committee. I don't know when they're meeting again, but I know it's soon and that's the, the recommendation so far moving forward, let's clarify what's residential. And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not aware of any authority that allows us to say you can't drive your truck on a roadway in the city of Kingman. That's a tough one, but we are looking into it. When I say we, that stuff that Jack Pawning is very, very familiar with and the requirements of that, that manual that I was talking about, so.
But you can say, but you can say you can't park on a residential.
Correct, yeah. And now to the limit, I know it was suggested making one side red, no parking, I wouldn't recommend that in the commercial piece, everything to the right of that line, but stuff to the left, I know we don't want to say no parking because that impacts people's, people's parking, regular people living in the area. But I do think there's some signage that we could direct traffic perhaps not to do the U-turn in the intersection and also making it clear that it's residential, right, parking. So I'm hoping that was going to help mitigate this situation. And I do appreciate Mr. Thawson's pictures and his concerns, I did receive those and I think that's it. So any questions?
I remember years, I guess it's several years ago, when we decided that RVs couldn't, you know, be parked on the streets and we were very concerned about children and the loss of visibility and how does that play into this particular area?
So the RV parking is covered under that same code and that same ordinance and it specifies, we're also complaint driven on that and we do get that, it's, it covers the same thing. So someone has an RV, they can't park it in the street beyond so much time and they can't even park it in their, their yard unless it's behind, behind a fence. So the application would be the same.
No, oh, the application is the same. Because that, that would be my concern too, is that if there are children going back and forth in that area, that blocking the, the site is really dangerous.
And I know the damage to the streets is something that we don't take lightly. We're just kind of in a, in a stuck between lawfully that we, we can't really restrict movement of vehicles, so. But if they were to get jackknifed and they're blocking traffic, there is enforcement there, but that doesn't, this person's probably never going to be in our community again for another six months.
So are you saying that the Traffic Committee is going to meet soon and you're going to decide on some best practice courses here or courses of action? Will that have to come back to the council or is that something that the city can just do that?
Other than I can report it to you, update you and I could just do that off normal channels, so.
Good.
Yeah. But I do, I'm hopeful that it would, it would work and remedy this.
Any other questions, comment? Please go ahead, Counselor.
Chief Cooper, I appreciate you looking into this and I, I do live in the neighborhood, I'm one street up and I, I see it daily, you know, when I leave in the morning, there could be one or two trucks. I mean, I've seen as many as eight at one time, they just park all the way up towards Western. And it is intimidating when you try to pull off Stockton Hill and you see trucks on both sides and that lane is small, so try to get two cars in there or even a fire truck or a police, police vehicle through there. It's concerning. So I, I would like, and you know, I know you guys have your committee, but maybe look at seeing if we can do parking one side of the street or the other. And then also we, you know, those houses, some of their bedrooms are on the back facing the commercial and when them trucks come in early in the morning and they sit there and idle all morning, I mean, can we do a no idle or a?
Not currently, no, we looked at those limiting and I don't see where we could because it's commercial.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a tough spot for those people that are right on that border because it is a commercial area, so. But it is something that we're going to bring up and look at because there's all kinds of little subtle nuances in codes that on the federal level that might allow us, allow us to do that, so.
I, I thought there was a deal where you could limit idle time on.
I'm not aware of it, but I'll check it.
Yeah, okay. And then, yeah, because the house to the north right there, that is a group.
The old fire station?
Yeah, the old fire station is a group home where there's people in wheelchairs and they're always out in the street and crossing and going through the neighborhood. And I've personally seen trucks come up on Lindsay and Raymond and Western. They come up and they turn and then they back up and they end up doing a U-turn. I've seen one or two actually get it, you know, should be out there heading out.
Right.
Good driver awards for guys that can pull that off. But I mean, they are tearing up our streets, but you know, I had one guy the other day, it took him five minutes and he's backing up, almost backed into a car. I mean, it's, you know, maybe a no U-turns and let's maybe education and maybe see if the business can tell him, just leave the neighborhood, go straight and hit Western.
Yeah, that stuff, that can be done. What can be done certainly is if they're parking left of that red line, because there is no red line in reality, right? But if they are, give us a call and we will do what we can and we'll locate the driver and the, in the Planet Fitness that'd be our first go-to and get, tell them to get it out there else they're going to get a ticket.
All right.
So that's an immediate response to the issue, but it doesn't fix it long-term and I'm aware of that. But I do appreciate everything that you're saying.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else?
I did have a question, Chief.
Okay, there is that.
That's okay. I'm even sitting at the big girl table today, so I just wondered if there was a way to put commercial restriction, parking restriction during certain hours. I mean, I know you, you say that you can't limit parking, but in one of his suggestions, no commercial truck parking after 10:00 PM. I, I don't know how big of an issue that is after 10:00 PM. You had mentioned Councilmember Walker that they're idling early in the morning, so I didn't know if that was an option too. It's just to post notice that between these hours, there's no commercial parking.
So that'll be a committee meeting question. I think that's perfect and I'll make sure that we talk about that.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Thank you so much, Chief Cooper. And the final department, department report is the Northern Arizona Fire District Feasibility Study. Chief Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me get this pulled up super quick, which almost did it, Annie. Almost, I was so close. She scolded me about which, how to share this, so let me. Okay, so, so I want to give a little update on where we are with the district and go over kind of the feasibility study. I just see my screen changing and yes, I realize it's you, I didn't mess that up. So kind of where we are with the feasibility study and kind of what's next and answer any questions that you may have. So I included the feasibility analysis in your packet. It's, it's a few pages, but it's easy reading. As with any consultants, they came in and took a kind of a, an overview of the, of the organization as it is. This was done by Facets Consulting, they met with the city manager. One of those individuals is the Commissioner for the Philadelphia Fire Department and the other one is retired out of the Phoenix system. So that's their business, they, they have several across the, across country that they've done. So really, when they came in, we wanted them to really focus on, on a few things. The value and feasibility of continuing the IGA for management services, what changes are recommended to improve the IG both short-term and long-term, and should we consider joint powers or another form of legal agreement moving forward? So those are the things that we really had them look at because if we go back a couple of years, two and a half years, when we started in this, this agreement, we had no really forecast of what that organization really was. The day that we took over was the first time that, that we had really seen the way that they do business. So we did not do a, a agreement or any kind of study ahead of time. If we remember rightly, we modeled this after Flagstaff. A lot of the same language etiquette, all those things that, that we used to do this, we just didn't have an open view of how they did business. And like a lot of things, when you open the doors, you really figure out and it took some digging and digging and digging. And I've reported back a couple of times of how that digging has gone. So really the scope of this was really looking at results of the IGA, the services and things that we provided, operational risk analysis, the, uh, operational risk analysis of existing staffing models and financial requirements, recommendations for the IGA that provides operational efficiencies that are equal to both, the city and district and financial analysis for extending the IGA to include operational and administrative functions of command staff members. So if we think about this agreement, we shared this with the districts, we split the cost because in looking at it, we go back to why we did this in the first place, the safety of our firefighters. That's what led to this agreement in the first place was some of the operational issues that they had there and the simple right thing to do. So if we look at that, we thought going long-term and City Manager and Foggan and I had a lot of discussions, if we're going into a longer-term agreement or extending this, then we need to share this, sign of good faith for both of us and obviously this, this impacts both the district and the city longer-term. So profile a little bit and I want to touch on this a couple, for a couple of reasons. Sixty-nine square miles, back in 2008 was whenever the Walupi, Truxton, Valley Vista and Chloride fire issues all consolidated into one, okay? The, the reason that's important, if you look at the map, down, you can see the four stations that are really the Butler North Kingman area, but let's think about Chloride. If you go out east, northeast, you look at the Valley Vista stations and go further east, Truxton. So that's what makes this geographically challenging is running this district. If we think about ninety-two percent of the calls, they're in the North Kingman Butler area. That's where the concentration of calls are. If for comparison's sake, we run about eighty-four, eighty-five hundred calls a year in the city of Kingman, they run about forty-five hundred call with half the staff. So I just want to kind of put that, those pieces in perspective. Nine stations is what they have, we operate out of three and that's gone down over the last few years. That hasn't changed under my tenure. They used to staff one person at Station Thirty-three, which is on North Stockton Hill, past Game and Fish, they had one person out there. So, and I'll talk about a little bit of that in a second, kind of where we've gone. This kind of puts a bigger picture on that scope of, of the district and how it's kind of spread out. So methodology, facets in April came in, they did several things pre-screening, getting documents ahead of time, any information that we could get them. They came in and did interviews with a little bit of everybody toward the district and the city as well to look at the services, service levels. They interviewed everybody from the city, they did talk to City Manager Foggan, all staff, BCs and a few of our other personnel. In the district, they talked to all staff, the board, everyone as well, as well as some follow-up interviews. So, so although they weren't on-site a long time, they did get a lot of information to conduct this. Financially, if we look at a couple of things, and it really stands out right away if, if you have looked at that report, financially, that was one of the biggest things that we had to look at right away is, is some of the practices they have. If we talk about risk and liability, in the fire service, you often think of that being on the fire ground, right? Risk and liability out there was their financial practices, so we have rectified that and I'm very proud of the things that we've, that we've reconciled and addressed across the board. If we look at bank accounts that really had people on it, shouldn't have been on it, past employees, lack of access, those type of things. We've had successful 2019 and 2020 financial audits that has gone very well. You'll see this number a couple of times. So based solely on the amount of time spent by managing the district, they estimate that we give them about five hundred thirty dollars, five hundred thirty thousand a year. Our contractors for a hundred fifty-five thousand a year. So let me, let me explain that right away. Here's a snapshot of time as, as we, as we opened the doors and started addressing things that they had, it's almost like bidding on a job, right? That'll take me ten hours, I'll get it done for this amount of money. When you open the doors, it takes you twenty hours. Well, you don't stop midway and renegotiate, you kind of keep going and address it. So I almost compare it to a, a bell curve, right? If you think of a bell curve, we start with this one fifty-five and at our max, we're given about five thirty. Well, now we're back down here on this other side because when you think about what five thirty is, that is the, when you realize that they don't do investigations, they don't do inspections, they don't do plan review, those type of things, you have to have those. That comes in our staff, right? So we, we use Mac Nelson, Alan Vanderploeg, some of our other employees to address those levels of services. There are battalion chiefs, they have battalion chiefs on duty just like we do, but through their staffing model, it just doesn't work. So our battalion chiefs actually cover their, their calls, okay? One of the big issues was safety, correct? So one thing that, that we found throughout this entire process is we can control safety better if our BCs run their incidents. I have three very good BCs and our write-ups are very, very capable. Their limits in staffing allowed us to make this move to do that. Our BCs, when we send an engine out of district, our BCs go with them. That's been our practice ever since I got here almost seven years ago, is if our, if we send an engine out, out to any other district, our chief officer, we have a chief officer going with them simply to watch them and for our safety. So now they're plugging right into the incident commander's role. So again, we've kind of gone from here, we've assigned a duty chief out there, we've taken one of their battalion chiefs and made him a forty-hour employee. So we've switched him over to that administrative role. So he's now taking investigation inspections, all those type of things, even relieving some of the other duties, implementing training captains. So our training chief is now. So if we start looking at those salaries in that five thirty, again, we were up here at our worst, but now we're back down here and, and really where we need to be, okay? Really going this way to make things work, now we're back riding the ship. And again, this isn't an overnight, overnight thing as, as you'll see a few times. I just want to go through some key points, this is right in the report that you were provided. That first one is obvious, the care and that we put into district personnel, training facilities, equipment and apparatus, we run it like, we run it like it's Orem, we run it just like it's Kingman. I, I've used the analogy a lot of times of pulling the sheet across the rest of the bed, that's exactly what we're doing. We have the same policies, we have the same practices, you name it, we try to do it exactly the same out there. It makes it more cohesive for not only the administrative side, the management side, but also on the operational level. So that's really important to us. One thing that comes up often is it's difficult to uniformly provide the level of service desired by NAFD residents as expressed by the district board members, as you've probably heard a few times. If we go back to our map, out in the Valley Vista area, it's challenging providing those services. We do have a staff station out there, but it's subsidized. We have, we pay more or we spend more out there to run that station with two personnel just because of distance and other things than we do where ninety-two percent of the calls are happening, which is in town. Those residents aren't happy with that, they have not been happy about that. But there are efforts to de-annex that are in the, in the works right now by the Valley Vista group, which will take Valley Vista, Valentine area and Truxton and kind of make them their own district again. That's a process. It is a, a long process, it's not an overnight thing and, and also has to get signatures and votes of, votes of the members out there. So that's not something the board can initiate, initiate, that is something that the residents out there that have to do. Benefits, obviously from a financial standpoint, the district is benefiting greatly, right? They can't, they can't afford to pay the level of service that they're getting. That's well, well-known and well-stated. Two principal benefits to us is a more reliable response from NAFD and the resulted higher level of service provided to city-owned and district property. So obviously our people train together, working together, that familiarity, which simply hasn't been there in the past years. We have several members of our, of our fire department, at one time, a few years ago, upwards of sixty percent of our department came from Walupi District. That's not the case anymore. So we don't have that familiarity, but in the last two years, our training together, our joint training sessions, all those things helped tremendously. So again, positive effects of KFD management, you can see this throughout, I, I think in the last couple of years, we've made a lot of commitment to the health, safety, wellness of their individuals, again, treating them like they're ours, one fire service, one family. As, as Manager Foggan and I often talk, firefighters have this, this mindset of when they show up, they'll get it done. They may not have the training. They may not have the training, they might have the right resources, but they'll get it done. And I would take this agreement much like that, but where do we go in the future? That's kind of what we have to look at. If we look at the management analysis, a a lot of people, and I've heard this a lot, if we're going to manage the district, oh, it's a small district. It doesn't take that amount of time. I disagree, uh, because there's a cultural change in there. There's a huge cultural change, and it does not happen overnight. Um, aligning culture and strategy to get us all on the same page and moving forward is happening. Um, but again, it's it's taken a couple of years to get where we are now. Uh, and again, that that initial, just implementing policies and S O Ps and structure out uh for some of our process, that's very, it was time-consuming for sure. Um, one of the things that we continue to hear recruitment, retention, a lot of other things, is the uncertainty. The uncertainty of both elections within the district a- as well as the the future of this agreement. Uh, we have, that affects major uh recruitment and retention efforts from candidates we have out there. Because it has, if you, if we go back in time, there's a lot of uh trials and tribulations out there. It didn't take, you pick up the daily paper and you would read about it. And I think we've done a very, very good job of decreasing that amount of attention out there. It's still there, uh, but not to the magnitude that it once was. But there's uncertainty about past administrations being put back in place, and there is fear of that, okay? And that's where this agreement really comes into play. Um, so operationally, obviously, the uh focus on the North Kingman area, the Butler area, that's where the amount of calls actually happen. Ninety-two percent, I've said before, but the other thing to think about is the airport. That's obviously that industrial park and airport, that is in the district. That is in their primary response areas. And that was one of the first things we did when we took over was change those run cars. Because the amount of risk out there, not only in dangers as far as the structures themselves and personnel, but also the financial. If we think about those businesses going out or shutting down for any amount of time, we're talking about a workforce that's out of work. I'll be able to pay bills or shop or do those other things. So we got to think about that, that livelihood and that risk in in that term as well. So and keeping them, keeping them employed. Um, obviously, the uh, the personnel that out there have appreciated what we've done as far as the structure, opportunities, training, S O Ps, operational improvements, uh, finishing the station out there has been a ten, twelve-year process, and we were able to get that done. Um, this map kind of shows some of the the density of calls. The blue areas, obviously, thirty-one, thirty-two, I know that's small on your screen. But if you look at the northern side in the blue, that's where popular the uh run calls are occurring. If you go out to the north and and west up here, this other map on your right shows the popular, the uh run calls out in the uh Valley Vista area. So you can show, you can see the differences there. Staffing models, as with any, as with any uh consultant, that they're giving you a big snapshot picture. So their operational analysis, they looked at a few things, simply the structure, manpower out there. You're talking about eight full-time staffing members a day, okay? You can count one, if not two of those off every day, vacation, training, sick leave, other things. So you're you're a minimum staffing. Our minimum staffing in the district every day is six, trying to staff three engines, okay? Those two in North Kingman Butler area and then one in Valley Vista. So it's a challenge. One thing that the consultants did come back and say is you can't run the model that Kingman's running or Phoenix is running, which is a battalion chief, captain, engineer, firefighter. You can't do it, you can't afford it, you can't staff it. That's that's what kind of what they said. So basically, they said that if you're not on staff, you're riding a fire engine. I, we don't, they don't have time or money or effort to stick them in a truck and be incident command when our personnel, our staff could handle that based on their call volume. The one thing that that does, and we have processes in place now, that if our B C's roll up there uh covering a fire, which they would anyway as an incident safety officer, uh, that our our staffs roll up, okay? Our B C's, our off-duty B C's, or even our assistant chiefs or myself come in and staff the city. So that's common practice for us. Um, the other is a district chief or duty chief, uh, to put that in place, similar to what the model we're doing now uh with uh one of their off-duty battalion chiefs. So he serves as that, I hate to say designated adult every day out there, but that's exactly what it is. Management by geography is a thing, uh, especially when we're going through this, uh, the changes that we're going through. So doing that in the last four weeks is just less than the load. A move we could have made, should have made a a while back, but with staffing concerns and other things, that was our concern of why we didn't do that. But that was one of their recommendations, is to look at that as a permanent uh permanent piece. Key findings out of this, obviously, I talked about the amount they pay versus the certain level of service we're giving them, and that's a concern. Leaning this far, this way, we have to get it back somewhere in here uh to make it right. It's beneficial for both of us, because as the city manager and I have talked, we can't continue this long-term. Uh, physically, mentally, all those things, making them both balance out is 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 a is a strength. We have to look about that. Again, that uh, we've addressed several critical issues, uh, financially, administratively, operationally, we've addressed those. And we have a lot of work to do still, uh, with no doubt. But again, that uncertainty about the status, structure and term of management services, I G A, is is a thing out there. Not only for their, mostly for their members, uh, but for their board as well, is what do they get next? If we go back in time, another reason we we wound up in this situation was they couldn't recruit a a high-quality chief uh that would get them where they need to be. So that was a factor uh of us taking this over. Um, the last key, the last key finding on here, and again, all this is in the in the report that I gave you. We have to look at the dynamics moving forward, our relationship uh moving forward and how we continue to do this. So some of their recommendations, they gave us four recommendations. Um, one is discontinue, just quit doing what we're doing. Number two, develop and pilot changes to the current agreement, um, to address the remaining challenges identified by internal and external stakeholders. So keep doing what we're doing, just modify it, is basically that. Create a long-term shared service agreement, uh, with full operational management integration. So a similar model is Levine down in the Phoenix area. Basically, Levine is a district. If you go south on the two oh two, uh, on that south side, there's little Levine. Basically, Levine meets, they give all their financials to the city of Phoenix. Phoenix runs that entire department. Um, so that's uh another option that they provided, and then a full consolidation through a through a J P A. So obviously, with the two different government structures, district and municipal, that's a challenge. It's a challenge. If we were district to district, that's well-known, can be done at any time, but we're not. Uh, so that brings about its own challenges. So if you look at B and C, some of the challenges that it within those, um, is the long-term premise of an agreement. We can sign a five-year agreement, uh, we can move forward with that. I think it, there's a lot of benefit to those type of things. But a new board, if the board changes and wants to go in a different direction, they can cancel that agreement. They can't be bound to that other uh to a previous. So if they want out of that, they can definitely be. So getting too deep into option B or C is tough. Option A is also tough, because again, I'll go back to the premise of this entire thing, is the safety of my firefighters. Uh, that is, that that's the the benefit of all. It's the right thing to do in the fact that citizens do not care what that emblem or the patch shows up. They don't. They just want trained professionals to show up, and and we're showing we can do that. Now, what's it look like? Um, I think we need to, we need to look at what this is. And that was the purpose of this whole study, was to kind of look at where we are, where we need to be, and look at some options. Um, the intent and purpose is that is that professional model, that safety of of both sides of the street. What's best for the city of Kingman? And I don't care if if that, the entire city of Kingman doesn't stop at the Gordon border up there. South side or north side of the street, doesn't matter, it's one community, and that's what people think. So what are the next steps? Obviously, guidance and feedback from uh from council, uh, as well as discussion with city manager Foggan, and sitting down with uh their board and starting to see what this looks like. What do they expect? What are they looking at? Obviously, one thing that's covered in here, their tax levy rate is three point one-two, the max is three point two-five. They're hesitant to raise that tax, but their budget is tight. It is very tight. So they're going to have to make some changes themselves, uh, to, obviously, if we continue this level of service, they're going to have to pay some more. But we're going to have to get this ship right back in here somewhere where it is balanced and and more feasible for us to to do what we're doing uh and continue to increase that level of service. So with that, um, questions?
When does the existing uh agreement expire?
We extended that to uh December thirty-first, and based on this, if if we're, uh, manager Foggan and I have talked about this, that if we have to go a couple of months because we're trying to work out some details or whatever that is, I think we could go a couple of months at a time if needed. But as of right now, it's December thirty-first. We thought that would allow adequate time to kind of move and and renegotiate and kind of get to where we need to be.
Okay, so you have taken those recommendations and put them through your filters and the manager's filters, and you think that this final conclusion you came up with is the best of all?
So I think the next, I think the next, um, I think there's a couple of options. I think there's a couple of recommendations that that don't work, me personally. But I think that's where manager Foggan and their board, we need to sit down and discuss what a couple of those are. I think there's a hybrid of a couple of these that that could work. Obviously, anything that we would do as far as agreement and structure would have to come back to the to you for final approval. Uh, but um, believe me, in that riding the ship and kind of getting it back to more beneficial, we've made it work. There's no doubt. But how do we, I hate to say wean them off a little bit to be more self-sufficient? I think that's where we need to be. We'll always rely on mutual aid and automatic aid from our partners, always. And and we're blessed here in in Mojave County that that we've really pushed mutual aid, automatic aid, so that when we have a big fire uh or other emergency, I can count on Havasu and Bullhead and some of the, some of those outlying areas or departments to come in and help. That wasn't the case seven, eight years ago. That was not. I think we've done magnificent doing that. Because not one department is big enough to handle the emergencies that we have with the heat, you throw in heat, you throw in short staffing, you throw in a lot of factors. We'll always have mutual aid. But for this particular agreement, uh, I think, I think looking at a a shared option of some of the things that they recommend, plus what we think can work, if you look at their operational pieces, they make a couple of operational recommendations that I'm like, oh, no. We we cannot do that. There's no way, because uh obviously, being close to it, uh, and more intimate with it, one of their recommendations was shutting down station thirty-two, moving that staff to thirty-three. Um, and I know I'm just pointing out in the air like it's a map, I apologize for that. Um, uh, but it just doesn't work, because station thirty-two is the first due to our airport and industrial park. And that is the most important. It's also our second busiest engine up there. So obviously, there are some things that you can't see whenever you're just looking at it uh in a short term. So it's those other things. So I think there is a mix of things of recommendations and information we can take. One, such as the district chief, that kind of pushed us over the edge to reassign that battalion chief. And it showed, it's shown uh benefits already, already. So that, I think, I think that has longer-term implications. If we're to move forward, I know that I have to budget for and have that person out there. I have to have that. And we, Jack and I, Jack Jaeger, uh, and I have talked about that since day one, is how do we split our time? How do we do those things, or how do we have that person? And it's just unfeasible for us to do that with with our department and everything that we manage as well, so. That's a long-winded answer to your question.
No, no, well, it makes sense. And I I really am glad that um, that this is very realistic and pragmatic, and you understand the stress points, the pain points, and that you are figuring out a a way to make it work, make it work better.
I think I know, I get reminded uh every month about the pain points. I know exactly where they are. And it is, it's it's uh weighing out the risk to both the city and luckily, knock on wood, we've made it work. Um, but but some of our decisions don't have long-term, they're just not long-term feasible, so.
Well, the excellence of the partnership in your work in particular is evident in so many things, including the flag fire and the Walupis, and so many times where it's been tested and and it's so excellent. So I'm I'm sure the council uh looks forward to how you mesh this solution together.
I am interested to see how I put this solution together.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Well, I just want to uh commend you, because I'm sure that was not an easy task to bring those two uh agencies together. And I would hate to see, I too am looking forward to what kind of hybrid you're putting together, because I would hate to see all the steps forward that you've made and all the the forward movement be negated by time.
Well, and I appreciate that very much, because you can see some of the obstacles, but in manager Foggan and I, that that's a huge fear of mine, because I think a lot of the hard work and effort that we've done could be erased just like that. And that's my fear, uh, that we go back in time, the safety of our firefighters, plus all the hard work and things that we have to put forward. Uh, moving that department together, um, culturally, um, them rebranding their own agency was, that was tremendous. And it came from the members. Moving them forward with strategic planning and then just our hiring practices, it's it's, I had hair, I think, a couple of years ago. Uh, but not really, it was definitely longer than that. But but no, it's it is, but I think in the, it shows in the outcomes, it really does. And uh, just something as simple as uh working, uh, we just had an arson arrest uh a couple of weeks ago, and it's because of the way we do business and being, and anytime you have that, it's it's a win. Uh, but it's those things you don't think about. You think about water on fires and and emergency response. And and the rural fire districts across Arizona are are struggling. Uh, we were just at Arizona Fire Chiefs, and and what I'm talking about is is when I taught a class and had these discussions, we're all feeling it. Recruitment, retention, financial pressures. Uh, obviously, I think making it work, we can make it work. It's just, it's just what does that product look like? What does that end look like? And and I'll be honest, uh, we're racking our brain, because it's a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So uh, but but I have, I have faith that we'll figure it out.
Well, I also wanted to ask, um, with the board, uh, turnover, um, that that's always a concern. It's been a concern, it's been that way in this community for a long time. Um, is there any way that anything can be written into their bylaws or anything that can be done to where a vote, like if we were to put together a mutual agreement, if there were a vote, a supermajority vote that would be required, something to protect that?
So unfortunately, that's covered by state statute as far as some of those binding agreements. But I think there is some long-term uh agreements and things that we can look at, and that's, I think that's just as important as anything structurally that we put in place, is something that 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 secures this past the board, past the vote, that we can really focus our efforts on. Uh, and and the members, the members out there can see at least the city's commitment and what and what we're looking to do. Um, you've had board members, you've had a couple of board members on there that have been on there twelve-plus years. Uh, and that's all, that's a long term. So can I count on them staying? And that's uh, that's, that's another thing. We have an election coming up next November, and that's already a discussion. So I think from the operational and and money standpoint, that's important. But so is this, so is exactly what you're speaking to, which is that election piece. And believe me, we are looking at every, every option for that, because some security is exactly that, so.
I think as as, you know, the city, it would bode well if we had some kind of protection in there, you know, that would go a long way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But good work, chief. I uh, I really appreciate that, because I know that was not an easy task. I've been around for a little while, and I've seen all the uh press that goes along.
There's a little bit out there if you do a Google search, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
I I just have a little.
Oh, go ahead, counselor.
I think what you guys have done is a great deal, and I understand the advantage of having them trained like our guys. It's it's just makes our guys that much safer, and you know, it's hard to put a number on safety. It really is. But at the same time, how long can we keep, you know, we got to right that ship sooner the better. Because, you know, we look at your budget and we go, we want, we want to pull our hair out.
Uh, no, it's a great budget. It's, I get told no all the time. No, I'm with you, and that is, that is kind of that that short-term, those snapshots. Again, and I, we've talked a lot about what's five thirty look like. That's that's significant, right? Especially when you're you're getting paid one, one fifty-five. But that's also this amount of time, it's this snapshot. So those things go away, and uh, obviously, I think there's, there's a couple of things we do. We have to get back to here, at least some some, some balance in the middle. Will that ever be with their staffing and some of their call volume? Will it ever be truly balanced? No, it it won't, but it'll be closer to right. We can't go ninety, ten, or eighty, twenty. It's got to be at least sixty, forty-ish in that range, so I'm with, I'm with you a hundred percent.
It's just hard to put a a price on safety, and and I I don't want to do that.
No, no.
I I want our firemen to feel safe working with their guys and going into a, you know, any situation. So I mean, I get it, but we got to try to right that ship soon and later.
I think you can rest assured that when I come back with whatever decision or whatever that is, whether it is, whether we get to the point where we say no more agreement, then you can rest assured, we've vetted this. then you can rest assured, we've vetted this process, we've been through it, and it is the best interest of the city and the district as a whole. Same with if we do move forward, you'll know why, you'll know how much, and, and kind of more of what we're doing. Because again, opening those doors over two years ago was enlightening, enlightening, I can tell you stories. That's all I can say.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But it sounds like in writing, some of those fundamentals that you addressed early on in these two years are addressed, and, and so that helps get this balance going in the right way.
It does, but is it?
But I understand the concerns about the election and the security of the agreement. But if it's a great idea, if those are great principles that you're putting in there, I'm hoping that any board that's elected will recognize the value of this partnership.
I hope so.
Let's hope so. Vice mayor, did you have any comments or question?
Madam mayor, no, I don't have anything. I, I just appreciate the report, and, but I am interested to see what we can do to make this all work.
Thank you, yes. Thank you so much, chief ladies. Okay, next order of business, announcements by mayor, council members, city manager, limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like to start?
Yes, just a couple of things. There is the Arizona League Roadshow that is going around the state. It will arrive in our region on August 13th, 10 a, excuse me, 10 a.m. at Lake Havasu Police Station in their council chamber room. And if, if you're going to the league conference, you may not want to go to this, but you'll get the information twice, but it's, they're, they do this annually after the legislative session. So just want to make sure the council knows about that. The other is live after 5:00. I think most people have known this as the first Friday. That event is happening, is scheduled to happen this Friday, and just wanted to make sure that the council knew about that, coming back after being on hiatus for a while now. And so it's good to have that comeback, and I, I think that's a partnership with our downtown and the chamber, and some, some volunteer folks that are trying to make it a great, great thing, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Samuel?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Counselor Walker?
Nothing for me.
Vice mayor?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things. A reminder that Live Well Mojave is on Thursday, I think, at 8:30, August 5th, from 8:30 to, I think it's 11:30, at the Walupi Campus of KRM C, and that again, is a meeting just to discuss healthcare issues and wellness in Mojave County, and so that's taking place. Wanted to commend the city again on the drive-through shield, phenomenal ribbon cutting and party that the, that the city gave at the Powerhouse Visitor Center. And that thing, that shield is getting so much attention, it's wonderful, people love it. So, and also, we did have tri-city council last week. Coming up, we have, the Study Committee for Water is starting to meet again in Phoenix, and I understand will be meeting monthly. This is going to be the, again, the continuation of the legislative effort to create a rural management area, and also an irrigation non-expansion area, emergency INA-type of legislation. And this is, Representative Cobb has worked on this for a couple of years, it has not gotten through, has not gotten through committees, but it's going to get one more shot. And this committee, the Study Committee, starts next week, and I'd like to thank vice mayor, since I had another commitment and couldn't be there, for being there in my stead. So other than that, I think that's it. So is there any requests for future items or agenda items from the council or reports?
Mayor, I would like to make a request. I'd like to have a joint presentation from Code Enforcement and Solid Waste on illegal dumping. I, I feel like it's important for the citizens to understand the protocol and how you go about the process, what the roles are between the different departments, and, and how they should, the citizens should utilize them if there should be any illegal dumping in our city, just for city beautification. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests? I'd like to mention that I know the city is working on the animal ordinance regarding aggressive dogs and bites, because this has been an issue that's come to our attention, and that we might want to look at that ordinance and see if there is enough specificity. And I know the city is, is looking into that now, and so I'm expecting that it will come back to council in some way, shape or form. And so that's the only thing that I would request at this time. Without any further ado then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second to adjourn, I think we're all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.